All right. Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and that it is being conducted in accordance with NJSA 10:4-6 et cec of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. Nora, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Perelik.
Yes.
Councilman D. Piero.
Here.
Mr. Dinsmore.
Here.
Mr. Frigiri.
Here.
Ms. Hernandez.
Here.
Mr. Mendel.
Here.
Chairman Von Aken.
Here.
He also have our board planner, Ms. Avatay here, our board engineer, Mr. Canjiano.
Here.
And our board attorney, Mr. Carlson.
Here.
Would everybody please raise or rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I believe starting our agenda for today, we have application number 19:516 as a resolution.
Yeah, tonight, we're just going to do the resolution on pond partners. The remaining, the balance of resolutions will be at the next meeting.
Very good. All right.
That's probably the very last thing to come here.
The last one, eh? Okay. All right. Just looking for the resolution now.
That's the resolution.
Yep. Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Dinsmore.
In case 19516, Pond Partners LLC, uh, minor site plan with C variances, I move the resolution as presented.
Do you have a second?
Second, your fellow.
All right. Please call the roll.
Councilman D. Piero.
Yes.
Mr. Dinsmore.
Yes.
Mr. Frigiri.
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. Mendel.
Yes.
Mr. Mealy. Not here, excuse me. He's absent. Uh, Chairman Von Aken.
Yes. Okay. Resolutions have been taken care of. Um, we'll call forward our first application for today, which is application number 20: 525, Homeless Solutions, Inc., uh, that's 24-32 Ruth Davis Drive, Block 10, Lot 1.03, as a courtesy review.
Thank you, Chair, and good evening, Chairman and, and our board members, board professionals. Luke Pontier of the law firm, Dave Pitney. Uh, I am here on behalf of Homeless Solutions, Inc.
Just, just a moment.
Bye.
Mr. Carlson.
This is a courtesy.
My daughter-in-law, I know, for courtesy reviewed, should I sit down for this, or...
You know, I'm gonna make a statement this time.
It's pretty hard to have a conflict for our courtesy review where the board's not exercising any of that.
I understand.
Thank you. Uh, so Homeless Solutions, Inc. is the applicant before you tonight, who is the designated nonprofit developer of shared housing on behalf of the county of Morris. As the Chair stated, the property is 24 to 32 Ruth Davis Drive, which is a portion of the county's property located at Block 10, Lot 1.03 on the Parsippany Tax Map, and this property is located in the R-R residential zone. Tonight's presentation is, is not a public hearing, but rather a courtesy review of a capital project pursuant to the municipal land use law. Uh, statute reference is NJSA 40:55D-31A, and that's to determine whether this project is consistent with the township's master plan. Just to describe from a high level, uh, the property currently consists of nine homes that were built between 1970 and 1975 as part of the old Greystone campus in the township. After the Greystone campus was transferred to county ownership, uh, the county did lease the buildings to a different nonprofit entity for use as group homes up until 2018. Subsequent to that time, the county sought a request for proposal to which Homeless Solutions, along with the family promise of Morris County, uh, were awarded that request for proposal, and that's to provide permanent affordable housing for up to 32 women. Homeless Solutions entered into a memorandum of understanding with the township of Parsippany Troy Hills to undertake certain renovations of the homes and to provide the township with affordable housing. I will let Dan McGuire from Homeless Solutions describe those renovations to you, uh, and also the use of the, the nine buildings that are located on the property. In connection with the courtesy review, we did receive three memorandums, one from the board's planner that was dated October 12th, 2020, one from the township's tax assessor that was dated October 2nd, 2020, and one from the township sewer utility that was dated October 5th of 2020. Uh, and now I invite Dan McGuire to come up and give a brief description of the project for you.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for having us. Um, I am CEO of Homeless Solutions and, uh, or HSI, as we will sometimes abbreviate it. Uh, Homeless Solutions was founded in 1983 and has grown to become the largest provider of homeless shelter and services in Morris County. We operate an 85-bed shelter in the former Morrisview Nursing Home on West Hanover Avenue, a 10-unit transitional housing program in Morris Township, have developed and managed 76 affordable housing apartments in five towns in the county, and in 2013 took over and renovated a historic 22-bed rooming house for elderly, income-limited women in Morris Town that helped inspire our vision for the project we're sharing with you this evening. Ruth Davis Drive, or RDD, is a cul-de-sac of nine largely identical houses on Morris County land that was once part of the Greystone Hospital complex. Originally a form of affordable housing for nurses employed at Greystone, the houses were most recently used as group homes before being vacated in 2017, 2018. At the beginning of 2019, Homeless Solutions and our partner, Family Promise of Morris County, were selected by the county through a competitive process to utilize the nine single-family homes for a population that helped address one or more of the county's human service goals. Uh, HSI is the lead for the physical renovations and the ongoing property management, and we will hold the lease with the county, and Family Promise is the lead for providing case management services. Uh, the awarded concept is a campus of permanent shared housing for homeless and at-risk women, primarily but not limited to domestic violence survivors and women whose economic situation is dire, but they're not yet homeless, that would be at-risk. Uh, tenants will have leases that cover their own bedroom and then the shared use of the common areas in each house, kitchen, living room, dining area, and so forth. Eight of the nine houses will be occupied by the 32 individuals you heard about, while the ninth house will be for administrative and programmatic uses, uses specific to the campus residents, and it will also be the home upstairs of a, uh, we haven't thought of a fancy title yet, campus monitor, house mother, if you will, uh, who will be there overnight if there's any sort of commotion or emergencies on campus, and during the day, Family Promise's headquarters is immediately behind the, uh, houses there. Uh, the RDD campus is ideally located adjacent to the county's nonprofit mall. Uh, in addition to the Family Promise headquarters, uh, the nonprofit mall houses the Interfaith Food Pantry, St. Clair's Mental Health Services, and the county offices of workforce development and employment, all right there in walking distance in the neighborhood. It also includes a New Jersey Transit bus stop and, of course, the trails and amenities of Central Park, which all combined to make this a great setting for the RDD residents to have stable, affordable housing opportunity and a chance to grow their self-sufficiency. Uh, so speaking of the affordable housing reference, uh, as was mentioned by Luke, Homeless Solutions and the township of Parsippany Troy Hills have entered into the memorandum of understanding wherein we will be deed restricting the units for affordability, and the township will be supplying some funds towards the cost of renovating the homes, and a copy of this agreement was provided to you as part of the submission. Uh, this shared housing project is part of the town's approved housing plan, and we'll provide, uh, 32 affordable housing credits for the 32 rooms, which is a really great win-win arrangement for, uh, the parties involved. Pending the final execution of the lease with the county of Morris, which we anticipate will occur at next week's freeholder meeting, HSI will conduct the renovations of the nine homes in two phases. Phase one will involve four or five of the houses, one of which will be that supervisory house, and commence immediately and hopefully be done by January of 2021, and phase two is pending architectural specifications and some financing, but we hope to advance this phase later in 2021 and be finished with all of the units by the end of 2021 or early 2022. Uh, the renovations generally consist of bringing the interiors of the homes up to an acceptable standard, uh, some are in rather dilapidated condition after a couple years of being vacant and being left, uh, as was, uh, so, uh, typically replacing flooring, repairing and/or repainting damaged or stained walls and ceilings, and updating some kitchens and bathrooms. Uh, exterior improvements could include repairing some siding and repairing or replacing areas of ingress or egress for safety, such as possibly some, uh, ADA ramps that are currently there but, but rotting out, uh, fixing some steps, a few dilapidated garage doors, et cetera. As part of HSI's management of these homes, uh, we will be responsible for the majority of maintenance within the houses and of the grounds of the property depicted in the boundary survey that was in the package, uh, that you all received. Um, this will include making sure that fire hydrants along those boundaries are kept clear of vegetation or other obstacles, and that the entry to a utility access path at the end of the cul-de-sac that the county uses is likewise kept clear. Uh, and, uh, Homeless Solutions will also be responsible for garbage and recycling and intends to continue to use, uh, dumpsters at the end of the cul-de-sac, uh, which have been employed, uh, for many years in that regard. And, uh, with that, that is the end of my formal remarks. If anybody has, has questions.
Any questions from the board at this time? Uh, one second, I believe Councilman has a question.
Will any of these women be bringing children to the homes?
No, sir.
No children?
No children. The, the plan, and if I can recall, the, uh, lease agreement is, uh, we are trying to do a single-person, uh, campus for a variety of reasons, um, uh, but again, these are shared housing units. There is in the lease with the county a clause that says, should circumstances change down the road, either in terms of the county's social service needs or, uh, funding or financing that affects the viability of this, it's a 30, it's going to be a 30-year deed restriction, so we have to have the long term in mind, there are options that, uh, the plans could be revisited, but it's in everybody's interest to have, uh, individual women being, sharing the housing. We, we wouldn't have families sharing housing with strangers.
Well, I was just considering if, if there were going to be children, then we need to notify the Board of Education and arrange for busing.
Yeah, that's, that's not currently in the plan. There's, there, again, yeah.
Mr. Perelik.
Yes. How is the cost to the resident determined for rent purposes or lease purposes?
That's why we haven't quite figured out phase two yet.
Okay.
Uh, phase one is, we do have, uh, in partnership with the county, uh, there's a, a mechanism called the Continuum of Care, which administers funding from, from Washington to address homelessness in, in the Morris County communities, and this is an eligible project, so we will receive for the first three houses, uh, to be renovated, some vouchers, this project scored very highly in their priority, so there'll be vouchers that will help cover the cost of both the rent and the case management, which is another big expense that we're trying to figure out. For the remaining phases, we will continue to explore different options, we can always apply for more continuum of care funds, but we're trying to have a more balanced, uh, uh, community, and so it would probably, as I explained earlier, people who are at risk of losing their housing, uh, could still afford lower rents. We could see low rents as low as 200, but really, uh, we'd be trying to get a couple hundred dollars per room, per tenant, to make the numbers work, and we'd probably be going out for some grants to help with the case management costs.
And so in a, uh, future phase, then, uh, uh, how long will the resident, uh, be able to stay? Will there be a limit on that?
Uh, there's no, it's permanent housing.
Okay.
Which is the goal. Uh, it's not shelter, it's not transitional, you can stay as long as you want, as long as you abide by the rules, pay the rent, be a good neighbor, um, and, uh, uh, what was I gonna say? I do anticipate that like any other situation where roommates are involved, uh, at some point, you'll get tired of living with roommates, and if you can take yourself forward, that would be a great thing to go get your own apartment and give somebody else a chance.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other question?
I do.
Go ahead, Ms..
I'm just, I'm just curious, so the other homeless solutions are for, for people that are just completely homeless? That's the difference between, like, the one in Morristown, that there, there's children there and they're homeless, and this is for people... I'm just trying to figure out how they find their way there, so if they're in danger of losing their home, as you said, and they can afford this rate?
Sure, well, I guess there's a couple of different questions there.
Yeah.
How you find it is a different question from what, what we're eligible. So we have a separate shelter.
Right.
We have a separate transitional housing program, we have separate affordable housing apartments that are entire apartments for families and whatever.
Okay.
Those are all separate. Uh, this would be sort of a variation.
Okay.
Except, uh, uh, the one that we have in Morristown for, uh, the rooming house has been really great, it's for elderly ladies, quite frankly, 18 to 19 out of the 22 were either homeless or at, going to be homeless. Um, I was spent hour on the phone with somebody desperately trying to find housing for somebody who's literally got zero dollars left after this month's nursing home, and they have to get her out of the home, and they need a room in this Mount Campbell home. So this is an equivalent, but it won't be age restricted, it'll be either people coming out of shelter, avoiding the shelter, uh, altogether, that sort of thing, and, and probably partnering, um, I guess, with some of the other well-regarded agencies in our community. I mentioned domestic violence, which is a big problem at the shelter and not, but, uh, we have New Jersey Badger Women's Service, where I imagine, uh, several, several single women would be very interested in this opportunity.
Great. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Uh, question, uh, how, how is the boundary of the property currently defined? Is, is there any, uh, any fence or structure involved?
Uh, if I, how it's defined, and, uh, there's a, there's a dog park on the side closest to Old Dover Road, which I believe the fence run, runs the link there, but really, what is the, the primary delineating factor is the wood line, the tree line, I guess would be the proper term. So as we've depicted it on the, uh, drawing that you have there, the survey, which we're utilizing in our lease, you know, the county will be responsible for everything in the trees, if a tree falls, they'll be responsible for it, we're gonna keep mowing and be responsible for everything that's grass, basically.
Okay. So that, that would be the area within the, uh, within the enclosed, uh, area here?
I don't know what...
You've got it...
Are you actually doing the survey?
Yeah, you've got it listed here as, uh...
Edge of lawn.
Edge of lawn, yes. That's, that's, that's ours. Everything inside the edge, look. Um, also, how is the street lighting in the area? Is it, is it considered adequate at this time for your needs?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
All right. Uh, uh, those are my questions.
Chairman, I just have a question.
Yes, please, go ahead.
Parking, what do you envision how the parking looks like, it's like a standard two-car driveway, what do you envision the need for parking is?
Uh, I'm expecting very limited parking use. Uh, uh, it's a great question. I don't, we're not going to use garages for parking, if anything, it'll just be for household storage or, or our storage for rock salt or, uh, tools and things like that, but we're not gonna, it's all about minimizing points of dispute, so we're not gonna have fighting about who gets the garage or things like that. I don't expect most of the ladies to have cars, quite frankly, given, uh, you know, their state of their finances, uh, which is why the, the bus stop was attractive, but I think primarily people would park on the street. Um, there, uh, for a couple of reasons, one, so you're not fighting over the driveway, B, some of the driveways, you probably can't tell from, from the survey, but, uh, some of, there's a little bit of a hill there, and not all the ladies are in the best of condition, uh, often, so, uh, parking flat on the street is probably gonna be the desirable, and, uh, it'll actually be a lot fewer cars on the street than the prior, uh, group home use, because some of the group home residents had cars, and then all of the staff who were parking from the 24/7 supervision were parking on the street too, it was actually quite, quite bustling, so. Was that sound factory?
Just four more question on the survey, I just finished off my notice. Seems to be some kind of like leasehold line or demarcation line between each lot, what is the significance of the, are they individual leaseholds?
Yeah, so, uh, that's more for our purposes with the county, uh, as I said, we're gonna have these two phases, and as we figure out which are the first phase houses we will be responsible for, we're gonna be turning to them and saying, all right, so those are the lawns you have to mow and the locks you have to shovel, it's really just, uh, to help us sort that out, uh, in the short term.
Thank you.
Mr. D. Piero.
Not a direct question to your application, but, and aside, if you don't mind, about a year and a half to two years ago, I got frantic phone calls from two senior citizens living in the apartments, their husbands had died, and with two social security checks they could afford to pay the rent, but now that the woman is alone, she had no place to go, and I referred them both to the Office on Aging in Parsippany, which had no solution. Would it be proper to, if this ever happens again, I, I felt so bad for those ladies, I had nothing I could do to help them, would, would you be the person to reach out to to, to refer women like that?
Is that correct? It sounds like they would be eligible, there would be an income eligibility aspect to this, but generally, if you're depending on social security, you're going to be very eligible for the deed-restricted housing element of this.
Great, I'll have an answer the next time, thank you.
And, and I have had conversations, I won't put her on the spot because I can't remember her name, uh, but, uh, somebody who works here at Parsippany who's been very interested in the plight of the elderly, uh, women of the community and situations exactly like...
Probably close like Will.
Uh, okay, uh, and, uh, that could be a potential to, uh, again, I, I wouldn't, probably not the kind of situation where, uh, once you get started with this, people will move out of the house and that's the next base, you're not really gonna be able to pick your roommate so much.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but maybe early on, we could, uh, even, I don't want to get hopes up, I'd be happy to follow up, maybe we could have like a dedicated house or something like that for, uh, I, I have to check, I, you know, I don't want to overpromise either with, uh, some of the affordable housing requirements.
One of them I found out had to move to California with his daughter.
Mm-hmm.
She wanted to stay here, um, with all the friends that she had, uh, but that was not possible.
It's, uh, it's hard up there, yeah. Absolutely.
Uh, I actually have a question for Mr. Canjiano. Um, does the, uh, area for the turnaround here seem adequate to support our, uh, some of our, uh, community service, um, vehicles?
Yeah, it's, it's, yes, I, I see it's not a full cul-de-sac hall, but trucks, I'm sure the garbage trucks can maneuver in that, they, they, they do like a three-point turn.
Yeah. I'm also thinking about some of our senior, um, buses and, and things like that, which may be utilized.
Same thing, it's, they may not be able to make it in one turn, but they'll just have to maneuver like a three-point turn.
Okay. All right. Any other members of the board have questions or comments? Very good. Um, Mr. Carlson, was there a next, next procedure here on a, uh, on a courtesy review?
Say thank you to Mr. Pontier and call the next application.
Very good. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, boy.
We appreciate the services you're providing to our community.
Yeah, have him come in. Okay. We're using the same attorney on this next one.
Okay. Okay. Then I gotta sit down. All right, so I believe, uh, Mr. Dinsmore, you have a conflict of interest on this next case?
Yes, my daughter-in-law works for Dave Pitney, she still does. Maybe from home, but she's working...
Well, we will miss your contributions to this.
Should we switch the order of applications?
Uh, would that suit you?
Well, it would allow. Mr. Dinsmore to sit on the Verizon one.
Uh, you know what? Like, the next, the one after that.
Oh, he, he won't be allowed to.
The application after that, like, a kind of...
Which one's in top?
He has a conflict with the...
Have the, have the, so proper order, that's... Tom, which one you have a conflict with? Zoetus.
You wanna go out of order or you wanna, you wanna know?
Uh, it would be wonderful if we could go out of order, but...
I don't see why not.
Well, he's already getting his guy, so...
Well, okay.
Let's bring Verizon in then. Okay, thank you very much. We're glad to have you.
He's gonna go out first. Lou? And then I'm looking to go out of there.
You okay to leave, I see?
Hmm?
You okay to head out?
Yeah, yeah. Sit with your guys.
Is anybody else's glasses fog up? Yes.
Oh, yeah. What's really bugging me right now is just the angle of these lights.
Those lights have got to be very hard.
It's, I mean, when you're sitting here, I think it's okay, but if they're...
They're higher up.
So that's why I'm like squinting constantly.
I'm watching one damn football.
That's true, that's probably, hey, I live for this.
Sorry to hear that.
So where is that property? I can't keep it straight over there.
Look, I drove past it once, all I can tell you is it's like a wasteland filled with a bunch of trucks.
Okay, so if you're going towards Summit?
Not far from, not, 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 not adjacent to by any stretch the, uh, excuse me, the transportation, but not far.
Um, if you're heading towards Summit, is it on the, on the left?
Not at the forefront.
It's like a, it's like a gas station, 7-Eleven?
Yeah, how, how best to do this? There, there's a, there's a bus company next to it.
Yeah.
The bus lot, it's next to it.
But it's on River?
What's that?
Oh, yeah, Rivers, yeah, I'm thinking, got it, got it, got it, got it.
There, there's like a, I'm gonna say it's school bus.
Yeah, it's for student, is, is it the bus lot?
It's more adjacent. I'm wearing a jacket and, my, my guy is trying, he tried to get the bus lot, but someone else grabbed it off the...
Application number 20:512, Verizon Wireless, 1719, Route 10, Block 200, Lot 1, minor site plan with C variance. Sir?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, uh, fellow members of the board. For the record, Richard Schneider of the law firm of Vogel, Cheick, Collins, and Schneider, on behalf of the applicant, Verizon Wireless, let me first extend my, uh, appreciation to the board, all of its professionals, and Nora for, um, allowing this meeting to happen during these trying times. I, I know I represent a number of municipalities and I'm appreciative of all the logistics that go into having this meeting, especially, um, in person. Um, the application before you this evening seeks approval of a wireless communication facility on the property that was just referenced by the chairman, uh, located 1719 Route 10 East, for the record, that's Block 200, Lot 1, located in the township's ROL zone. In this particular case, the wireless communication facility, uh, will be located on an existing electric transmission tower located on that property. That tower, by way of background, exists at an existing height of 127 feet by virtue of an insert, the antennas will be, uh, at a height of 143 feet exclusive of a lightning rod, uh, on the top of the, uh, facility. In addition, there will be certain ground equipment within a compound located at the base of the electric transmission tower, just for informational purposes, it's 17 by 20 feet, that's gonna house the, uh, 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 radio equipment, and there's a separate smaller compound of about 13 and a half by 9.8 feet to house an emergency generator. As a preliminary matter, it's important to note that... As a preliminary matter, it's important to note that under Parsippany's wireless communication ordinance, wireless communication facilities located on an electric transmission tower are a permitted use. In addition, it's also very important to note that we are in the ROL Zone, which would essentially be the first priority under Parsippany's ordinance. And that is, as noted by your planner, thus not only the proposed use is permitted, but it is a preferred site based on the township's wireless technology regulations. And that's somewhat interesting because I've been doing work for the wireless companies for many years, and I see, I believe, Councilman DiPiero here, and I remember Mr. Dinsmore from many years ago at the Board of Adjustment. And what's interesting about how it's evolved in Parsippany is, I don't know if these were good times or bad times, but when wireless first came into fruition, so to speak, in Parsippany, there were a number of very contested cases. And I think the councilman, and I could be wrong about this, was the one who, at the time, years ago, was the one who was a proponent of having a wireless communication ordinance. And Mr. Dinsmore certainly remembers some of the battles that were before the Board of Adjustment. And I think what was significant as that ordinance was ultimately introduced many, many years ago, was a reflection at the time of the governing bodies' intent that they wanted to encourage facilities on electric transmission towers. And you combine that with the fact that this property is located in the ROL Zone, represents essentially a dual priority in terms of what the township is encouraging. Notwithstanding the fact that the use is permitted, there are a couple of variances that are associated with this application. I'll briefly summarize them. The first is a height variance, because technically, under your ordinance, you could only extend the antennas eight feet above the height of the existing structure. That would allow us to go, in this case, to 135. The antennas are at 143. And you'll hear from both our witnesses why we need essentially a, at least in our opinion, a minor eight-foot deviation for the antenna. The other three variances all relate to the use of the electric transmission tower. The electric transmission tower is located right at, essentially right off of Johnson Road. Because it's a corner lot and located close to the, essentially the two corners, there are certain setback variances that are associated. Those are strictly a function of the fact that the electric transmission tower is already non-conforming as to the setback. Once you have to put the equipment under the electric transmission tower, the setback variances are pretty clear and evident. One of the variances is you can't have wireless technology in the front yard. The electric transmission tower is already in the front yard, so that almost goes without saying. In terms of who we're presenting this evening, I have three witnesses in total. I'm hopeful they'll all be brief, but I don't want to be presumptuous in that regard. The first is already up there is Ms. Frances Bishulti. She'll test, she's the radio frequency expert of the applicant. She'll testify as to the need for the facility and also confirm to you that the levels of radio frequency emissions would be in strict compliance with the applicable FCC regulations. The second is Mr. Frank Palasurdo. He's the applicant's architect. He'll go over all the site plan details and certainly address any outstanding comments in the respective review reports, including that of your engineer. And the third is Mr. Kim Kronk. He's the applicant's professional planner. He'll obviously review the statutory criteria for the granting of the variance. So unless there's any preliminary comments, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, I'll proceed with my first witness.
At this time, I'd like to go through the waivers.
Sure.
As presented by our planner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In terms of the waivers, I think we had asked if approval by the Morris County Planning Board is a requirement here?
It's already been obtained.
It's been obtained, okay.
We'll be glad to submit that, but it has.
Okay, well, that can be a condition. Resolution, you know, a lot of the waivers that we recommended had to do with the fact that there is no actual construction, you know, in terms of building proposed here. I think a lot of, you know, what we noted here would be addressed in testimony, like general description, use of the buildings. But that's more about the operation of the ground, the ground-level equipment. But we recommended a series of waivers because it's not, it's not really a building development per se, including traffic study, environmental assessment, existing structure, and, you know, floor plans, signage, those types of things. And I think the applicant will address the remaining items via testimony.
Okay. Motion to accept the waivers?
Mr. Chairman, I move the waivers as outlined in the planning, your planner's report.
All right. Do we have a second?
I'll second, Hernandez.
All right, very good. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Waivers are accepted. Please continue.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Bishulti, I guess you need to be sworn.
Mr. Bishulti, would you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear the testimony you're about to provide is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Would you state and spell your name for the record, please?
Frances Bishulti, G-A-S-T-E-N-D-O-S-C-H-U-L-T-E.
And you're testifying as a radio frequency transmission expert, correct?
That is correct.
I'll take a couple of moments just to qualify. That would be okay? Ms. Bishulti, what is your profession?
I have a bachelor's degree in electrical engineering from the City College of New York. I've worked as a radio frequency engineer for over 15 years, and I have designed and studied several cell sites throughout the state of New York City. I've also testified before many boards in the state of New York.
And your testimony in conjunction with your prior testimony before both planning boards and boards of adjustment has been accepted as an expert witness in the field of radio frequency engineering. Is that correct?
That is correct.
The chairman, I offer Ms. Bishulti as an expert in the field of radio frequency engineering.
Any questions or concerns from the board about the qualifications of this witness?
All right. If this is acceptable, please continue. Thank you. Ms. Bishulti, let's take a couple of moments just to put on the record what you've done in preparation for your testimony. As reflected in the report that you submitted in conjunction with this application, you've had the opportunity to review Parsippany's wireless communication ordinance that I referred to in my opening remarks. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And you're familiar with the site plan that has been submitted, at least as it relates to the radio frequency aspect of that site plan? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and you've had the opportunity to visit the site, correct?
That is correct.
And you're familiar with Verizon's existing coverage in the area surrounding that of the subject property, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And you also did viewing for your firm are the author of, or the prepare, I should more properly say, of two reports that were submitted in conjunction with this application. One is a radio frequency report dated May 11, 2020. The second is a analysis of the predicted radio frequency environment dated April 26, 2020. Is that correct?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Now, with that background, I'm going to make an assumption that the board has some pretty good familiarity with how wireless works. But let's just take a couple of brief moments, if we can, just to discuss Verizon in terms of its licensing and some basic difference in the frequency bands. Verizon is, Verizon Wireless, I should say, is licensed by the FCC to provide wireless service to this market area, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and they operate at a number of different frequency bands? And can you just briefly go over that as it might relate to this application?
Yes, Verizon Wireless is licensed in four frequency bands. First in a 700 megahertz, the 800 megahertz, the 1900 megahertz, and the 2100 megahertz. You'll often see a description between the two, where the low band, which is the 700, 800, they propagate further. They, so you will see on the coverage map that you'll see a larger coverage footprint of reliable service. And the higher frequency bands are more attenuated by the environment, so you'll see a smaller coverage footprint on the 19 and 2100 megahertz band.
Okay. When an applicant such as Verizon comes in to a township such as Parsippany, whether it be the planning board or Board of Adjustment, generally, they're seeking approval of a wireless communication facility because there is some, what we generally would call a gap in service area. I noticed in your report, you provide actually a nice concise lay summary of what the manifestations are when there are, when there's not reliable service. With respect to both voice and data, can you just, in a couple of sentences, maybe have us just be clear about what the differences are or what the issues are when there are, when there is a gap in service area?
So Verizon's service goal, what we refer to as reliable service, means a good user experience. And that means that when you are trying to make your voice call, which is now in the form of data, or a data connection, that the user is able to utilize the service to its full capability, meaning that you can make a connection, you can maintain the connection, and there is no loss of information. So that is what we consider a good user experience. And you are utilizing the applications with the throughput that you expect from 4G LTE today. An unreliable service is where a user has a negative experience, where you would lose data connection, or you would see the constant spinning wheel, long delayed times, and you're not able to utilize the service.
Okay. And based on that negative experience and this experience that the Verizon Wireless subscriber wants, is there a specific empirical standard that you designed your network to, and that's reflected in your report?
Yes. So analysis has been done based on the frequency and the equipment to come up with a signal strength for reliable in-building service. And this is what is depicted on the coverage map in green.
Do we need to mark this as an exhibit or is this part of the submission?
It was part of the application submission, so I didn't think you need to.
Nope.
Yep, that's it. So Frances, just, the chairman just pointed to the exhibits that you are about to refer to. Those are the exact same exhibits that are reflected in the report. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So you designed to neg 95, and that's what's reflected in green. Before we get to the specifics of the coverage in this particular area, on the last page of your report, you list Verizon Wireless facilities within the township of Parsippany, Troy Hills, correct?
That is correct.
And those are essentially all of the Verizon facilities that are located within Parsippany, which potentially, which do provide the coverage to the township of Parsippany and the surrounding towns. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. With reference now to, and I'm not going to hopefully try to, hopefully I won't interrupt you, you have mounted a series of exhibits. So maybe without interrupting you, can you identify what the issue is that necessitates this application located at the subject property? And specifically, is there an existing site that is not performing to the levels that we need the site to perform to, which substantiates the need for the site at the subject property?
Yes. So Verizon Wireless currently has an existing facility. If you look at the exhibit identified as existing 700 megahertz LTE coverage, the existing facility is identified by the purple icon, and it is known as 10 over 6.
That's just an internal designation, correct?
Yes. It is north of State 10, and it is located on the Hilton. The objective is to relocate this existing site to the transmission tower because currently this facility is low. It has difficulty reaching the businesses that are south of Route 10, as well as improving the buildings near State Hill Drive and Campus Drive near Davis Avenue. So the objective is to, by the increase in height, you will see from the additional exhibit that the footprint will be increased, and they'll be able to provide better in-building service to the area.
Okay. Let's break that down. Let me follow up with a couple of questions. The, when we were preparing, you indicated to me that the height of the existing facility located on the Hilton is approximately 65 feet. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So we're comparing and contrasting that 65 feet with the 140 feet at the electric transmission tower at the subject property, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And the, referring now to the charts that you're about to go through, there are certain coverages that exist both at the 700, which is the lower frequency band, as well as the 2100, that you are receiving from the Hilton property. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And therefore, and then you've done a analysis based on computer propagation model as to what the coverage would be at both frequency bands if a facility were to be approved on the electric transmission tower, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So for the benefit of the board and any members of the public, will you compare and contrast to the four, like, I believe there should be four exhibits, and show the differences in coverage and highlight if you compare to us the specific areas that would be served by the new facility that are not being covered by the existing facility?
Yes. So as I mentioned, this is partly the existing 700 megahertz. And you can see on the next exhibit, which is identified as existing 700 LTE coverage with the post, you'll see that there's an increase in footprint to the west and to the south of the post. So specifically, by relocating the site to the transmission tower with the increase in height, you now provide coverage to the Signature Place on Johnson Road. You also provide to several of the other office buildings, Covenant Place Community on Little Town, Littleton Road and Underhill, which is by here, this 202, in green. And overall, the improved filling coverage is approximately 0.25 mile south.
And the testimony that you just gave us, just so we're clear, is that, is there's a difference between the coverage, the better coverage that you would get at the 700 megahertz frequency band versus the 2100 megahertz frequency band?
Well, yes, as I mentioned before, you can see on the map itself, the coverage footprint is larger because of the lower frequency band. But the 2100, actually, because it's higher and it has a smaller footprint, this increase in height to 140 feet, you'll see more of a dramatic improvement to the area.
And is there a specific coverage, separate and apart from the 2100 frequency band, is there some additional coverage even realized at the 700 megahertz frequency band?
I'm not sure.
Okay. There's, there's an improvement in coverage both at the 2100 and the 700 megahertz band. Is that correct?
Yes.
And the area that you're achieving a benefit in terms of 2100, both south, west, and north, if I understood your testimony correctly?
Okay, but I haven't got.
Okay, go ahead. Go ahead.
All right. So on this exhibit, the identity is existing 2100, you can see that the propagation to the south of State 10 is limited. And with the improved, with the increase in height, you'll see that we are able to provide significant better coverage along Johnson Road to the south, heading toward Rice Way, as well as to the north and northwest for Davis Avenue and North Street.
Okay. And is the increase in coverage in terms of both the 2100 and 700 frequency band, is that a function of both location and height?
Yes. But I'd also like to mention that you can see, if you look north, where the existing site, 10 over 6, is located. Being positioned at this particular location and the increase in height, you are still providing coverage north of Route 10 as the existing site is.
Okay. So just so I'm clear, even though the site essentially is being relocated from the north side of Route 10 to the south side, you're still maintaining that coverage on the north side of Route 10. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So in your professional opinion, based on the four exhibits that are attached to your report and which you've referenced here tonight, would the proposed relocation of the wireless communication facility eliminate the gap in coverage that you identified this evening as compared to the existing site?
Yes, it will be an improvement to the area, providing better in-building service and filling in some of the gaps that customers currently experience.
Let me, let me just follow up, if I can, not to prolong it. You mentioned in-building. When I first started doing this and some, and some of us first started doing it, the the focus of these facilities often was just providing in-vehicle coverage. When I first started doing this, or when you first started doing this, perhaps back in the 1990s, has the network objectives changed in that regard, where the focus now is not just in-vehicle coverage, but presumably providing wireless coverages to both residential and office or commercial properties? Is that correct?
Absolutely. It's basically how we communicate today. So we're far beyond just using phones in our vehicle. And it's not just phones. It's all of our tablets and all other sorts of smart devices that are able to utilize the 4G LTE network.
Okay. And in performing the analysis, is it fair to say that your required minimum height in order to meet the objectives that you've just articulated today must be at this 140 feet? Is that the minimum essential height that you require in order to provide the coverage objectives?
Yes. At 140 feet, we're able to meet the objectives and the increase in coverage as I mentioned.
Okay. Let me switch gears, if I can, to one other aspect of your testimony. You've also submitted a report which was prepared for the specific purposes of confirming that the levels of radio frequency emissions are in strict compliance with the applicable FCC standards. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And did you perform that analysis in accordance with the required methodology by the Federal Communications Commission?
I did.
Okay. And in performing that analysis, do you use a series of worst-case scenario assumptions in order to ensure that the levels are in strict compliance with the FCC methodology?
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
So the assessment takes into account the worst case. And that means that the system is transmitting 24 hours a day at the full FCC licensed power.
Okay. So using the FCC methodology and using the series of worst-case scenario assumptions, do you have an opinion, as reflected in your report, as to whether the levels of radio frequency emissions can be operated in strict compliance with the applicable FCC standard?
Yes. Verizon will be in compliance at this proposed facility. And the predicted maximum worst case was 2.123, which is 47 times below the FCC maximum permissible exposure limit for general public. And for New Jersey, it's 0.425%, which is 235 times below the New Jersey maximum permissible exposure limit for general public.
So just to put a nice wrap and bow on that, utilizing the FCC methodology in the worst-case scenarios, where 47 and 200 times plus, respectively, below the applicable standards. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I have nothing further for Mr. Scholpe. Any questions from the board of this witness? Mr. Perrow.
Yes. Mr. Scholpe, will your frequencies interfere with any others in the area?
When you say others, meaning?
Any other customers operating within the area?
Basically, no. So Verizon Wireless is licensed to operate within their frequency band and their frequency band only. So as long as they are operating per the FCC license, there should be no interfering. And I'd also like to point that Verizon Wireless is already operating in the near vicinity, and they are not interfering with any other utilized devices.
Mr. Mandel?
I'm just sorry, this is chairman. I just don't know the board member's name.
That's Mr. Perrow.
A.P.E.R.W.I.C.
Correct?
A.W.I.
Yeah. A.P.E.R.A.W.I.
Mr. Mandel?
Not being a neophyte to the radio business, why would you not keep the existing tower and just add the new transmission point to improve?
Well, it would be redundant. The new transmission tower at the 140 feet does the job of providing the additional coverage as well as the coverage being provided by the Hilton.
Okay. And just a follow-up. You keep talking about 4G, yet you're advertising 5G. Is this capable of 5G? Or are we going to come back here and ask for more later?
5G is, as you know, is the higher frequency. You have a much smaller footprint. At 140 feet, 5G wouldn't be ideal. But however, if they needed to upgrade, there is room on the facility for them to provide 5G, and if they choose to do so.
Thank you.
May I?
Ms. Hernandez?
So my question is, picking back on the 5G question, because aren't most of those, and I don't know anything really about this, well, aren't they shorter towers, the 5G? So would we just be having multiple towers?
So as I mentioned, all the wireless towers are slowly rolling out. It is really going to be spot specific, not be rolled out everywhere, because on each environment, assuming 5G. As I mentioned, you're at a higher frequency, and it's really for users to be closer to that wireless facility. So at 144 feet, you're not really going to have the benefit or the experience of 5G. So 5G is really, as you were correct, will be on lower heights.
Yeah. So they will just be adding 5G towers, would you call them, in all these areas as well? I know as you said, it's like sites of specific, but...
Right. I don't know the Verizon future plan, but as I mentioned, it would be areas where the 5G, the increase in throughput and speed, would be utilized. So maybe medical facilities, where they're trying to utilize the increase in throughput and bandwidth for medical imaging. So it would be looked at and evaluated, and then decided whether or not this is a good particular application for 5G.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Hernandez, if I may, I've seen some 5G applications already, and they, in at least my experience, they tend to be on telephone poles.
Yeah.
Right. That sort of thing. They're not towers.
Right. The council, generally, as a, I don't want to be, you know, I don't want to talk as an expert, but generally, as council noted, I think you were alluding to, generally, the 5Gs are a much lower, the 5G installations are much lower. They're possibly on telephone poles or smaller utility poles that are located, I don't want to say in all cases, but often within the public right-of-way of streets. You may have...
In my experience, it's an entirely different animal.
It's entirely different.
No, I understand that, because we did see something like that here. I mean, we were preliminarily, not...
I think we discussed that.
We discussed.
Something like that during the police.
I just was talking about redundancy. But that, but again, I don't know the 4G.
But your basic point is entirely correct, that the, again, subject to a lot of acceptance, the general design is to utilize either new poles within the public right-of-way or to utilize existing either telephone poles or electric transmission towers. And while I don't want to talk as an expert, generally, those are, correct me if I'm wrong, are generally in the 30 to 35 feet height as compared to the larger macro facilities. That's the big distinction. So for clarity, this is not a 5G request. This is something else.
Correct.
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions for this witness or on radio center? I think we're all set. Thank you. Thank you, Francis.
Sir, if you'd raise your right hand, please. Over here. Hello? Do you swear the testimony you're about to provide is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Would you state and spell your name for the record?
Frank Colasurdo.
Call the phone.
Thank you. Frank, what is your profession?
I'm a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey. I've been licensed since 1999. I've been developing wireless communications facilities or designing them since I've been licensed, almost 20 years now. I testify in front of this board and numerous boards in Morris County with respect to wireless communications equipments and designs. And I've been accepted as a qualified witness.
Good. In probably at least over 100 cases, at least, Frank?
Any concerns?
At least over 100 cases?
At least.
Okay. Any concerns from the board about this witness? The witness is acceptable? Please continue. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Frank, you are the preparer of the site plan. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And you are familiar with the existing site conditions, correct?
That's correct.
And you're familiar with the relevant ordinances of the township as they relate to this application, correct?
That's correct.
And you've also had the opportunity to review the respective review reports of both the township planner as well as the engineer, correct? Okay. I think the board is probably familiar with the site, but just for purposes of record, why don't you just take us through very briefly with reference to the site plan, the basic information concerning the site in terms of its size, its zone district, present improvements, et cetera? Okay. And you have mounted, just for the record, that's the same site plan that was submitted in conjunction with the application?
I'm watching sheet three of the site plan.
Yeah, I'll do it. I got to say this.
The property fronts Route 10 around Pleasant Avenue. That's over 700... A 738 feet of front yard, not Route 10. It also has over 800, 838 feet of Johnson Road. It's built with a one-story office building. I think it's shaped like an octagon, on a 17-foot track. Office building. In the upper, that would be the north corner, there's a small east there for a one-story Starbucks. And the subject power tower, the existing JCPower tower, which those are the documents I have, I believe have been around since 1963. Those are the documents that JCPenney first led me. The tower sits 760 feet from Route 10 and 50 feet, I'm sorry, 5 feet from Johnson Road. All the equipment that's going to support wireless design is located on the tower or at the base of the tower, fenced in.
Frank, could I just interrupt you? Just, I'm sorry. In terms of the property, with the exception of the Starbucks and the electric transmission tower, the property otherwise is in compliance with the ROL zone, correct? The only thing that's non-conforming, I believe reflected on your plans, the Starbucks technically is in non-compliance with the front yard setback. Is that correct? And the electric transmission tower, likewise, does not comply with the bulk requirements of the ROL zone. That goes back to 1963, correct? Just so we're clear, and I know this may be subject to interpretation, but I think your, I don't think your planner took any issue with it. Technically, a quarter block, I guess you have a front yard in terms of the distance between the electric transmission tower and Johnson Road, correct?
Can I give you a microphone, if you don't mind? Speak into that.
I'm sorry, Frank. So there's technically, you have two front yards. You have Route 10 and Johnson Road, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And the electric transmission tower is technically located in the front yard setback as it relates to Johnson Road, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And the, just so we're clear, because it invokes some of the variance relief, technically adjacent to lot four, it's a non-conforming rear yard setback. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Go ahead. I'm sorry. So why don't you then take us through, with that understanding that it's the electric transmission tower which represents some non-conforming conditions, why don't you take us through what's proposed in terms of this particular facility?
I'm going to turn to sheet Z4 of my site plans. On the right-hand side of the sheet is an elevation of the existing electric transmission tower. It rises 127 feet above grade, and we're proposing 16 antennas, 10 feet above, or I should say, a 10-foot clearance between the top of that tower and the bottom of our antennas. Those antennas are supported by a structural steel tube that's installed right down the center of the power tower. And then there's a four-sided structural platform made out of pipes and stiff arms, rigid arms, that will support the antennas itself, the antennas themselves. To the back or the rear of the power tower, we're proposing a 17-foot by 20-foot fenced-in compound. That's where our radio cabinets go. Those radio cabinets are approximately the size of a small refrigerator. And if you open up one of the doors, you'd see a bunch of data processing units. They look like little VCRs in there. And that's what drives the signal. We also have a telephone box, or what we call a fiber box, and an electric panel. We need a 200 amp service to run this system, as well as a telephone line, a fiber line. The other component is a standby backup generator. We're proposing a 30 kW diesel generator to support this service. So power ever goes out in the area, our system will stay up and running. The last component are the coaxial cables or the transmission cables that exit the equipment cabinet. And they rise vertically inside that structural tube that's going to support the antennas up to the antenna height and are connected into the back of the antennas through a series of smaller, what we call jumper cables. Really, that's about it. I mean, just to give you a summary of a facility like this, it's unmanned. So it doesn't produce any, any, well, it doesn't require any potable water, doesn't produce any solid waste, doesn't produce any traffic, with the exception of a routine maintenance visit once every four to six weeks for my technician. He'll come to the site in a Ford Explorer-type of van. There's plenty of parking on-site. And he'll take a look at it, make sure everything looks decent. There's no pieces of fence missing. The equipment is in all good shape. And make sure the antennas are hanging the way they should. The facility itself doesn't produce any smoke, any noise, any that would exceed the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection's noise standard, that being our generator, our general, meet not only emission standards, it's a tier-three minimum generator, as far as emission goes. But it will meet the New Jersey noise standards with respect to decibel levels measured at the closest property line, levels measured at the closest property line, which in this case is across the street from Johnson Road. It's not our property line, it's the next property line. Don't require potable water, don't produce any sewage, no vibrations. And the only light we're proposing is a work light. And the base of the, uh, and inside the compound, that's a, a work light for my technician. If he needs to come out here at night, it's got a motion sensor and a photocell on it.
Okay. Frank, couple of follow-up questions. The, each of the compounds, that for both the radio equipment and the generator, that's going to be surrounded by a seven-foot-high chain link fence, is that correct?
Chain link fence with.
Okay. Because one of the questions, I believe, of the planner was, um, there was a request that the chain link fence proposed for the equipment be black, and it will be black, is that correct?
That's what's detailed on the plans.
Okay. Thank you. You've indicated the lighting. One of the other, um, recommendations, or at least discussion points, is whether there's the opportunity for any landscaping. Recognizing that we're obviously, for the most part, in a very commercial area and that the, with all due respect, that the visibility of this facility is, is limited, nevertheless, is somewhat of a show of, of good faith, have you prepared a, a simple landscaping plan in terms of what we might be able to do, given the parameters of, of what, uh, the restrictions are imposed by JCPNL, who's the owner of the tower?
Yes. I have tonight, uh, an exhibit called EXP. I guess we're going to mark that.
Mark that as A1, because that was not submitted with the application? Just mark that as A1 with today's date, if that's okay?
What's the title of the document?
Nineteenth?
Yes.
Nineteenth.
I'm sorry?
Yes.
What's the title of the document?
You can just read the title, Frank.
So, uh, what I just marked, exhibit A1, is titled Landscape Exhibit, and the sheet is EX1. I think what's important to note about this exhibit is in the lower left-hand corner, I have the first energy requirements for planting. They have some strict guidelines when it comes to planting within their right-of-ways. You're allowed to have certain plants outside the wire zone. You have certain plants in between the, uh, wire zone and the edge of the right-of-way. And they're all outlined, or enumerated, one through eleven on the exhibit. And just for an example, um, let me see. Number, I don't know if I have fifty. Okay. So number six. Any landscaping must be a minimum of fifteen feet from the tower foundation with a maximum maturity height of three feet, uh, when under the wire zone. Wire zone is, uh, in between the wires. Okay? And then, um, beyond that, um, three feet under the wire zone and extends fifteen feet on each side of the outside of the conductors. Any landscaping located in the border zone, so that would be the border zone from the wire, overhead wires, uh, to right-of-way, um, can have a maximum maturity height of ten feet. So First Energy gives us a planting, plants, certain species that they want to see in those different zones. So that's what I'm representing here. On our exhibit, I've noted the border zone and the wire zone, and that's the fifteen feet clear of the overhead wire. And within that, we're proposing four landscape shrubs, a dwarf alberta spruce, two, oh, sorry, three of those, I'm sorry, five shrubs. And then two blue wonder dwarf, which is another type of alberta spruce that will grow to that maximum height that First Energy likes. And we're limited what we can do because of the regulations we have to work with and the species that they like to see.
Okay. So that essentially represents the maximum thing that we can do based on the requirements of First Energy, correct?
Yes, yeah.
Let me turn your attention to some additional comments as contained within the municipal or the planning board's engineer's review report. They're at the conclusion of the report, they're on page two. I think some of this you've covered already in testimony, that the applicant should provide testimony as to site operation, maintenance of the site. I think you've already addressed that. The applicant, point two, the applicant should testify regarding diesel fuel storage and fuel refilling operations. Can you address that?
Yeah. Let's, um, turn to another one of my sheets in the site plan. Okay. So this is a little hard to read, but sheet Z nine, I hope it's clear on your plans. Anyway, this is a diesel generator with a two-hundred-and-ten-gallon, what we call a belly tank. That sits underneath the generator. That's a double-line tank, so in other words, it'll hold two-hundred-and-ten gallons inside the main chamber. There is another chamber around that, which is what we call the spill-containment channel that has actually leak detection. That can hold up to another twenty-five percent more than can actually fit in the main tank. The reason they do that is that leak detection. If that signal was sent to the switch, um, they'll, they know something's wrong. Also, at the fill-up location, the port, it's similar to what your car is, okay? I mean, this is just a generator with no wheels, it's a car engine. It's a screw-on cap. So in other words, to, to fill it up, you have to screw the nozzle on, or so it will not distribute the fuel. That's what we would call a tertiary type of containment system. You got the spill containment, you got the monitoring, and then you got the control at the nozzle itself. So you're not worried about someone sticking a nozzle on there, then walking away fifteen feet and having a cigarette while it's filling up. You can't do it, it has to be screwed on.
Okay. Couple of other things, Frank. A question was posed about concerning truck parking to accommodations. I think you dealt with that, but, uh, the maintenance visits are once every four to six weeks, and they usually come just in a standard SUV, is that correct?
That's correct.
And they would be able to utilize, obviously, one of the hundreds of parking spaces that are on site?
That's correct.
And it's only once every four to six weeks. Obviously, you'll comply with all, uh, you have provided already the testimony concerning site, uh, lighting details, correct?
Yes.
Okay. You'll obviously be responsible for satisfying all requirements of the construction officials, no issues with that. And the last point was, the applicant should testify if any planting or landscapings or fence inserts are proposed. You've addressed that, both in terms of the supplemental landscaping, as well as the confirmation that it's black vinyl chain link, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Chairman, nothing further for Mr.? Oh, I'm sorry, one other thing.
I got one more thing. I, I want to just.
I can answer you one question, then you can. You also have submitted in conjunction with this application a structural report which confirms that the Fort Worth insert will comply with all applicable structural code provisions, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Just the last thing, when I, the facility itself, I want to let you know that it's monitored remotely. So I don't want you to think it's not being watched. It's monitored twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Even though it's not manned, there's eyes on it all the time. So if an antenna starts acting funny, a silent alarm is relayed through that fiber line to a switch, and they, they know, if someone tries to tamper with our equipment, they know about it. These are locked steel boxes, it'll take a lot to get it, get them open. So just because it's not manned, I don't want you to think it's not being monitored, it is twenty-four-seven.
Now I have nothing further for Mr. Colasurdo. Ms. Vate, any questions from you?
No, the comments I had were addressed.
All right. Mr. Caggianno?
Yeah, everything was generally addressed. Just a question on the, the, the fueling truck, maybe this intended to come to the parking lot too and just bring the hose over to the generator?
Yeah, it's, uh, it's not one of those big fuel trucks that you see delivering home oil. It's actually a pickup with a, with a, um, um, uh, fuel tank that sits in the bed. So they have their own, they hire their own company to constantly service the, these facilities, so it's just a regular pickup truck that comes.
And then just as a matter of, I noticed you had noted a few, a few hundred square feet increased in permi service for the equipment. And is that a gravel base, except you're, all the way around the equipment?
Yes.
Within the fence line is gravel?
That's correct, yes.
There we go.
Any members of the board have questions for the witness? Go ahead, sir.
I'm sorry, sir, do you identify yourself?
Sorry.
Sure. Bruce for Jerry. Question, you, you might have addressed this, and I, I was trying to decipher the plan. How high is the generator going to be, since we've already established that there's, you know, there's runoff and potential flooding there? Is it eight foot two? Did I read that correctly, or was that the entire height of the generator?
That sounds like the total height with the generator on top of the belly.
That's what I was wondering. So how, how high is that platform from, from the surface where the, where we're going to see that kind of runoff?
Well, the, um, the CPAD, we're calling that a CPAD, which is, let me just consider it a concrete pad. That's only like four inches above the gravel. Then the belly tank itself is like twenty-four inches, and then the generator sits on top of that.
So roughly twenty-eight inches off surface, if I did my math.
To the bottom of the generator?
Yeah.
Yeah. Actually, I'm sorry, I apologize. It's higher than that. The belly tank is thirty-four inches. So the, the fuel tank, holding tank is thirty-four inches, and then the generator sits on top of that.
So it's three feet when we add the four inches of, of your pad? Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Mr. Powerwick?
Does the power depend solely on the generator, or do you have?
A little part of here, I have help, close to here.
Go ahead, help it. Does the, uh, power depend solely on the generator?
No, we have, uh, the power from the street, regular utility service, which is a two-hundred amp service that'll be brought in on the ground. It'll go into a meter that's located inside the compound. If the public service ever loses power, that's why we have the generator.
Okay. You use that as an ultimate, uh, the outlet for the.
Right, right. Just, just backup, that's it.
Mr. Powerwick, you have a microphone, right? Just making sure. Okay. Nope. Just to remember, yes, thank you. Mr. Mandel?
How many hours would you get out of the two-hundred-and-fifty-gallon tank?
About, uh, let's say close to forty. Depends on if it's the load, if it's seventy-five percent or a hundred. But this particular unit, this'll burn, um, close to three gallons per hour.
The reason I mention that is during the, the last outing, we were out, what, four or five straight days?
Yeah. Yeah, and that's why they have their own delivery service. They don't really, they have, they'll come there every twenty-four or, or thirty hours. They won't let it reach empty. As a matter of fact, they won't even let it reach a quarter of a tank. They'll just come there, every time it's a half-full, they'll come and just keep filling and filling until they, till the power's turned back on.
And I'm assuming that unit is similar to the one I have at home that runs once a week to, to check everything?
Yes, yes. It'll run, it, it's exercised once a week for about thirty to forty minutes. Usually occurs between ten and, and two PM. I think it's Tuesdays, they tell me.
It's been a Tuesday for thirty years, if they ever change it, we're. Mr. Dinsmore?
Yes, and actually, this may be as much for our planner. A silly technicality, I'm sitting here looking at a fence in the front yard that's over six feet tall, and did, did we actually put the variance in there?
It's, uh, doesn't require a variance because it's not subject to the same requirements, because it, it's got a separate requirement in the wireless regs. You can have a higher fence.
Oh, okay. Fair, I just wanted to make sure that if we granted this, they wouldn't be coming back. That's it for now.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? All right. Any questions from the public? Please continue, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Raise your hand, please. Do you swear the testimony you're about to provide is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Would you state and spell your name for the record, please?
Timothy M. Kronk, K-R-O-N-K.
Mr. Kronk, can you provide the board with the benefit of your qualifications, education, and experience?
Certainly. I have a bachelor of science from the University of Massachusetts. I have twenty-seven years of land use experience, predominantly in New Jersey. I am a New Jersey licensed professional planner and an AICP certified planner. I have testified throughout the state and been accepted as an expert in the area of land use planning. I have been accepted by this planning board, not recently, and I've also been accepted by the zoning board in Parsippany.
Chairman, I offer Mr. Kronk as an expert witness in the field of professional planning. Any questions from the board of this witness and his qualifications? All right. Seeing none, this, uh, this witness is acceptable. Please continue. Thank you. Mr. Kronk, can you, without me interrupting, just basically articulate what you've done in preparation for your testimony here this evening?
Uh, yes. I have, uh, I have reviewed the application, I have reviewed the site plan, I've reviewed the Parsippany Township ordinances with specific attention to the Wireless Cell Communications ordinance, I have reviewed the master plan, visited the subject property on numerous occasions, including when the photographs were taken for the photo simulations that were submitted to the board.
Okay.
And.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Does it?
You didn't mention you also have the opportunity to review the.
Yes, I have reviewed the municipal reports as well.
Okay. Can you describe the relevant characteristics of the subject property, at least from a planning perspective?
Uh, from a planning perspective, the subject property is block two-hundred, lot one. The lot is fifteen-point-one acres. It is located in the R, ROL zone in the fifteen, or actually, can I use this?
Sure.
You want to mark this, or?
Is that submitted?
No, that wasn't submitted.
Okay. Let's mark it as A2.
If you would just read the title of the document into the, into the record too, please?
Thanks. Too many wires here. This is A2. It's entitled aerial photograph, handover six, uh, Rilo, which is the Verizon internal name, seventeen-nineteen Route 10, East Parsippany, New Jersey.
Thank you.
This is a Google Earth aerial photograph, um, and has flight date of February twenty-second of twenty-twenty, um, just before the lockdown. The subject property is located at the center of the aerial photo and is easily recognized as the octagon building. Fifteen-point-one acres is outlined, fronting on Route 10, and, uh, also fronting on Johnson Road with the Borough of Morris Plains boundary in that roadway. The subject tower is located in the southwest corner of the subject property and is identified by a red dot on the aerial. This is located in the JCPNL right-of-way. As you can see, it's outlined in yellow, and that is a two-hundred-and-ninety-foot transmission right-of-way with double towers and also some other, uh, gas lines as well. Uh, also up front, um, fronting Route 10, right at the corner of 10 and Johnson, is the, uh, is the Starbucks.
And the, I presume, from a planning perspective, the critical factor, or the critical aspect of the, of the property is it's the electric transmission tower, obviously?
That is absolutely the most critical aspect of the application. Verizon Wireless is proposing to install their installation on that existing transmission tower, and the aerial photograph is great for illustrating. Uh, you can see that we would be encroaching on the front yard setback for Johnson, and then also the rear property setback to the south.
The, before we get into the specifics of the variance relief, um, as I indicated in my opening remarks, uh, the use here is permitted, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. Uh, the, the use of wa, installing wireless cell communications on an electric transmission tower is permitted anywhere in the municipality, and the fact that we are in the ROL zone, it is a number-one priority for locating wireless cell communications as well.
Okay. You've heard the description presented by Mr. Colasurdo from a site plan perspective and Ms. Bishulti from a radio frequency perspective. Perhaps the, the nicest way to conclude the presentation is to provide, in terms of the visual analysis, what's proposed. So can you take us through the visual analysis that you present so that the board can have a pictorial understanding of what is proposed here?
Yes. I have the, uh, the five photo exhibits that were submitted to the board as part of, um, as part of the submission package. I'll run through those real quick. Oh, you got it. Those were submitted, so we don't need to mark them?
Correct.
Okay.
Unless there's any change to any of them?
Yeah, the last one I have.
Okay, we get to the last one, we'll walk that.
Okay. So the, the numbers on the photo exhibits here will correspond directly, uh, to those in the visual analysis package that, that was submitted with the application. The first exhibit, uh, is photos 1A and 1B. This is the view from two-fifty Johnson Road. That location is represented by the yellow dot on the aerial photograph, exhibit A2. Uh, this is a view that's approximately seven-hundred-and-fifty feet away from the proposed tower installation. And in the existing conditions photo on the left, you can clearly see the, uh, the tower visible down, um, down the road. On the right-hand side, um, 1B, that is the computer simulation. In the computer simulation, you will see that we have added, uh, the proposed ten-foot extension above the existing one-hundred-and-twenty-seven-foot tower, and then the Verizon wireless platform with the sixteen antennas that would be visible, uh, from this location. Do you want me to pass these? We, we have copies of it. Okay.
Just waiting for the last one, Tim.
Yep. Okay. The next exhibit has photos 2A and 2B. Uh, this is the view from the corner of Route 10 and Johnson, represented by the yellow dot on the aerial photograph, looking down Johnson towards, uh, the tower. This is a photo location also about seven-hundred-and-fifty feet away from the proposed installation, existing condition view of the tower on the left, and then on the right, computer simulation with the tower extension and the platform with the sixteen Verizon antennas installed. Next exhibit has photos 3A and 3B. Uh, this is the, the view from sixteen-thirty-nine Route 10, uh, represented by the yellow dot on the aerial photograph, exhibit A2. This is a view of nine, uh, nine hundred feet away from the proposed tower, tower installation. Um, once again, existing conditions photo on the left and computer simulation on the right with the. Once again, existing conditions photo on the left and computer simulation on the right with the proposed extension and the Verizon Wireless platform and antennas installed. Exhibit... The next exhibit has photos 4A and 4B. These are the view from just off Littleton Road on the Whitegriff property, approximately 800 feet away from the tower, represented by the yellow dot just inside the Whitegriff driveway, looking towards the existing transmission tower where Verizon Wireless is proposed. On the left here, you can see the existing conditions photo, and then on the right, computer simulation with the tower extension and platform inserted at a view approximately 800 feet away.
Is that the one we need to mark?
Yes, this is the one...
Why don't we mark it as A3? And if you could just indicate the title of the exhibit?
Okay, Exhibit A3.
Sorry, I think we have this one, actually.
Actually, there was one modification.
Got it.
Landscaping?
Yes, probably.
Using his old pen.
Okay. The last exhibit has 5A, as was shown in your package. This photo location is right at the driveway where the subject property X is on the Johnson Road location, about 200 feet away from the tower. The existing conditions photo on the left is the same. What I had done on the photo simulation on the right was I changed from the original, the chain-link fence that was on there, to the black-coated chain-link fence and black-coated posts. So that was the modification that was made on here.
Now you remind me why I thought it was gray.
Did any members need to see the modified image?
Well, I can't see it, but I can see it on...
Picture of black effects.
I can picture black and pedigree.
You see it less.
Just wanted to make it available to you. Okay, Tim, with that background in terms of now having described what is intended, let's take a couple moments just to review the variance relief. As we both discussed, the use here is permitted. Nevertheless, I believe it is a total of four C variances. The first one was alluded to by Ms. Vishulty in me in my opening remarks. The tower height exists at 100... The electric transmission tower height exists at 127.1. Under Parsippany's ordinance, you're allowed to extend that by eight feet, which would allow us to go to 135. The antennas go to a maximum of 143 feet, correct?
That is correct, yes.
And utilizing the C2... Or I should say, C1 or maybe in this case, C2 criteria, can you establish the basis upon which the applicant believes it is titled to the required height variables in that regard?
Yes, I do believe that the tower height deviation would be better addressed as a flexible C2, even though we are in a situation where we do have a hardship, except the hardship is not directly associated with the property. The hardship is that the Jersey Central Power and Light actually requires a 10-foot separation from their towers to the antennas. So right off the bat, we have to go 10 feet above. We only need an eight-foot variance, so if it wasn't for their requirement, we'd have no height variance at all. So I do believe the board can grant the flexible C2 without... Grant the variance will substantially outweigh any detriment. In this case, the only detriment that you could really say would be visibility, and at 150 feet, it's very difficult to tell the difference between 135 and 147. So certainly do not think that is a detriment that most people in the public would even notice.
So in your professional opinion, the benefits of the purposes of zoning substantially outweigh any detriment, correct?
Substantially outweigh based upon the municipal ordinance that has a preference for transmission towers and has a preference for the ROL zone.
And just to buttress that so that there's no stone left unturned, as a matter of law, by virtue of Verizon Wireless holding an FCC license, its use has been held to serve the general welfare. So obviously, there's no issue about its use advancing the purposes of zoning, correct?
Certainly. The fact that Verizon Wireless does possess the requisite FCC license, that license does prove that they do promote the general welfare through enhanced telecommunications services.
Okay. The second variance is technically under Parsippany's ordinance, you cannot have any wireless technology in the front yard. The fact is that technically, the electric transmission tower exists in the front yard, so any use of that tower invokes the need for that variance relief, correct?
Yes. As clearly can be seen on Exhibit A2, the transmission tower is very close to Johnson Road. Placing antennas on the tower, we need to have the equipment compound and the generator in close proximity to those antennas. So we have a hardship in this situation that if we're going to use this permitted structure here, we would need the relief because we have to keep our equipment in close proximity.
Correct. So essentially, under C1, that electric transmission tower would be a lawful structure existing thereon, which is already located in the front yard?
Correct.
Okay. Let me segue and hopefully conclude your testimony. You've indicated, obviously, that the electric transmission tower is already located in the front yard and is not in compliance with the... Or at least, I indicated, is not in compliance with the present front yard setback or rear yard setback as it relates to lots four. That has to be existing electric transmission...
Correct.
I'm referring now to Mr. Colaserto's Plan C-Z3. That shows that at its closest point, the generator would be 25 feet, 11 inches to Johnson Road, and at its closest point, 22 feet, 4 inches to the adjoining lot line with Lot 4, which would be the rear yard. The front yard setback is 100 feet, the rear yard is 40 feet. Therefore, by virtue of the generator being located at 25 feet, 11 inches and 22 feet, 4 inches, they don't comply with the respective setbacks, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Nevertheless, and I think you alluded to this already, the equipment and the generator must be obviously located in close proximity to the electric transmission towers. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So therefore, any use of the electric transmission tower and the need to have the generator and the equipment in close proximities will almost essentially automatically invoke the need for variance relief from the front and rear setback, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So on that basis, do you have an opinion as to whether the statutory criteria, either under C1 or C2, is there for those two setback deviations?
Yes. Actually, these two could be approved under a C1 or the same C2 analysis that was provided for the height variance as well.
Chairman, I have nothing further for Mr. Kronk. Any questions from our professionals? Mr. Vate? Mr. Cagiano?
No.
All right. Any board questions? Okay. Ready to continue?
Mr. Chairman, that concludes my...
Oh, I'm sorry. Did the public have any questions? You may continue.
Mr. Chairman, in the interest of time, I'll conclude with any closing statements other than to note the following, too. This is exactly, I think, after many years, the type of application that Parsippany, I think, should look upon favorably, and this meets all of your criteria and frankly, the objectives of your ordinance. I would urge you to approve the application as submitted. I think, other than compliance with obviously the respective review reports, the only supplemental condition would be incorporation of the landscaping plan as reflected in Exhibit A-1. And obviously, we'll agree to the extent required to change the coating of the fencing as per, I guess, Exhibit A3, I guess.
Yep. Okay. Any comments from the general public? All right. Seeing none. Any comments from the board? Okay. I'll accept the motion at this time.
Mr. Chairman, in application number 20:512, Verizon Wireless, 1719 Route 10, Block 200, Lot 1, I move that we grant minor site plan with the C variances requested in the application with the stipulation that they're going to paint the fence gray... Uh, black.
That would be a black fence, right?
A black fence, yes.
And they have landscaping consistent with, I believe it was A1.
Yes.
Correct.
They're willing to... Anything where our professionals specify that it's supposed to be done that way, they're happy with that.
Okay. Do we have a second? Mr. Mandell. All right. Nora, let's take the vote.
O'Carrawick?
Yes.
DePiero?
Yes.
Dinsmore?
Yes.
Pedury?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Mandell?
Yes.
Vaughn-Aken?
Yes. Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Michael, you put together a good ordinance.
Yeah, I wrote that ordinance.
I know you did.
Maybe we're so opposed to that, why didn't you think so? You should not want any ordinance to address anything else.
You know, it's important for towns to get in front of these things, so thank you for being in front of things like that.
Well, the objective was, you do not want towers, they say. So the ordinance, the way I wrote it, said you must find existing structures. An existing structure exists, you must use that.
Okay. Calling application 20:510, Zoetis. Did I say that correctly?
Zoetis.
Okay. Tensilvan Way, Block 202, Lot 1.12, preliminary and final site plan with C variance. Very good.
I'll just note for the record, Mr. Panier, that Mr. Dinsmore has excused himself. He's got a conflict with your law firm.
Great, thank you. Good evening, Chair, members of the board, board professionals. Luke Pontier of the law firm, Day Pitney, here on behalf of the applicant, Zoetis Services LLC. The applicant is the tenant of property located at 10 Sylven Way, which is designated as Block 202, Lot 1.12 on the township's tax map. This property is located in the ROL Research Office Laboratory Zone, and the property is approximately 9.22 acres, containing an office building, structured parking, and related site improvements. The applicant tonight seeks preliminary and final major site plan and bulk variance approval to install a generator, concrete generator pad, curbing, and related site improvements to support the existing office building that's located on the property. The applicant is not proposing any improvements to the existing office building, to the garage structure, or to the signage as part of tonight's application. This application does impact a couple pre-existing variances. Specifically, a variance is sought from the Parsippany Troy Hills Township Code Section 430-183 to permit a buffer of approximately 97.4 feet, where 98.4 feet is presently existing and a buffer of 150 feet is required. The proposed improvements will also result in a less intense variance that has previously been granted by this board. Under Township Code Section 430-276A16, where a maximum of 481 parking spaces are permitted, 525 parking spaces are existing, and 523 parking spaces are proposed if tonight's application is approved. As you'll hear from our project engineer, there is also a clarification of a variance that was previously granted, where the applicant had previously been granted an approval for 22.5 feet of aisle width, where 24 feet is required. After construction and as built, it is actually 22 feet, and that's not something that is impacted by tonight's application, but it is presently existing, so we wanted to get that clarified for you tonight and on the record. We did receive four memorandums in connection with tonight's application. One from the board planner, which memo was dated May 1, 2020. One from the board's engineer, dated May 15, 2020. One from the township water department, dated May 12, 2020, and one from the township sewer utility, dated June 17. Notice was published in the Daily Record on October 5, 2020, and was mailed to property owners within 200 feet of this property on October 8, 2020, each in accordance with applicable law. An affidavit of service and mailing was provided to the board secretary in advance of tonight's meeting. With me tonight to provide testimony, I have Brad Bowler of Bowler Engineering as the project engineer, and at this time, I'd like to ask him to come forward as well.
Could you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear the testimony you're about to provide is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Would you state and spell your name for the record, please?
Sure. Bradford Bowler, B-O-H-L-E-R.
And would you give the board the benefit of your qualifications and experience, please?
Sure. I am a licensed engineer in the state of New Jersey. I have a bachelor and master's in science in civil engineering at University of Pittsburgh. I'm licensed in five other states up down the east coast, and I have been working as an engineer for over 15 years.
I think you've been accepted by this board several times before, correct?
Any concerns of the board with the qualifications? The witness is acceptable. Please continue.
The first exhibit I'll show is the survey that was submitted with the application. So the application's at Tensilvan Way, Zoetis Building.
Mr. Carlson, we'd like to mark this as A1. It is the survey that was submitted with the application.
This was submitted with the application?
Yes.
No need to mark it?
No need to mark it.
Is that better? Yeah, is that better? Okay. So the original application... Man, it's a little too close. It's been my first time since March, so...
Really? Wow!
Well, virtual is a lot easier, obviously. So this application was presented to the board in 2014 and approved to renovate the Zoetis building. At the time, it was an older office building and install a second-story garage in the back. So for the purposes of this application, Sylven Way is on the right side of the plan, and the office building's in the middle, and the parking deck is in the back. So this is actually a record drawing of that project at the time. So this is the basis of the application. The focus of our generator tonight is in the upper right-hand corner of the... I'm sorry, upper-left-hand corner of the plan, which is the northeast corner of the project, and we are proposing a generator in that location. So I'll now go to the proposed conditions, which is the overall site plan sheet, CO2, which was submitted with the application. Again, Sylven Way is to the right side of the plan, and the north side is the left side of the plan, so north is the left. And the application tonight is to propose a generator on a concrete pad in an enclosure on the northeast corner of the property. It would be the upper-left-hand corner of the plan. The generator is a 40-by-11-foot enclosure with generator within... Within side of it. It is a cast... It's a metal enclosure on the pad. The metal enclosure wraps the generator, so you actually won't see the generator itself. You'll see just cast metal sheeting on the outside, and then it's on a concrete pad about 45 by 14 at that location. It is protected by bollards on both sides, and the proposal would have the generator be installed within two parking spaces that'll be removed. So going from 525 parking spaces to 523 parking spaces. And then it does extend into a grass area just to the east of those parking spaces on the site. Do you have those site photos? So we have some site photos that were requested by the planner as part of the application. We'll mark those A1s.
We'd like to mark these as A1s. Four photographs taken today, October 19.
Should take one, mark it A1, and give it to the board secretary if you would. And...
So, what these photos show is the location of the grass area and the landscaping beyond,
which would be impacted by the site. If you looked from the parking lot directly to the east of the trash enclo, I'm sorry, the parking deck next to the trash enclosure, and you look north from the site, in that area, you can see it's a grass area. There's also a small berm, about two feet high, in the, in the background of those photos, and the, the generator will be placed in front of the grass berm, on the grass, the flatter grass area, in the two parking spaces. So, the, the generator itself is a diesel-run generator. It is enclosed, I mentioned as, with a, a metal enclosure that provides soundproofing to attenuate sound to the state requirements for sound attenuation. The generator itself is, is located within the, within the system with a gas tank, but the enclosure itself is about 13 and 1/2 feet high, fully surrounded on, on the, on all sides. All access doors for the generator are on the south side, so facing into our property, away from the site. And the generator is sited on the site, generally in line with the previously approved parking deck. It's about one foot closer to the back property line, going from 98.4 feet to 97.4 feet. So, that's one of the variances, it's a slight encroachment, but again, it's not impacting the buffer in that back area with what you can see in the photos, it's, it's pretty heavily vegetated. We're also required to plant a number of evergreen trees as part of the previous application along that berm, so those were, that will stay in place as part of our application. So, from a site perspective, that's where the location is, is sited. We do increase the coverage by about 600 square feet of coverage, which is a fairly de minimis increase of, of impervious coverage. I think it's .08 acres, if you go down to the, the actual criteria. I did mention we lose approximately two parking spaces, so we go from 525 to 523. It brings us closer to conformance to the requirement of a maximum parking spaces, and we do have some slight impervious disturbances, but not much from a development perspective. The one other variance that we had noted was a 22-foot-wide drive aisle, so that is located to the, the east of the, of the building. When we had previously been in front of the board in 2014, we, we called that a 22-and-1/2 foot wide curb area and drive aisle. There's no parking on that, it's just a 22-foot, 22-and-1/2 foot wide driveway. When we built the, the, the actual structure itself and did the site renovations back in 2015, the curb line came in at 22 feet, so we're asking for that variance to be granted just to perfect that. But it, it does not impact, it's not impacted by the generator, it's really just purely a modification to capture that variance back. With regards to exercising the generator, which is what comes up a lot for, for the process, we would do that once a week, or, or once every two weeks for 15 minutes during the daytime, so during normal operations, just to make sure it's functioning appropriately. We would not, obviously, do it at nighttime, that's not something that we can do, and that would be the, the extent of the exercising for the generator. And that's really all I have for direct testimony for the, for the project.
If I could bring you back just for one second, and it may require you to put the survey back up.
Sure.
In making the decision to locate the generator, could you run through the environmental constraints that are on the property?
Oh, yeah, sure. So, to the east and the north property lines, as well as the western property lines, there's a wetland area that was flagged by our, our wetlands expert. We looked at placing the generator within the wetland area to the east, and the DEP will not allow that as part of their application, it's too close to the wetlands. Along the north side of the property, we didn't want to go into that green buffer that was established back when we built the, the deck, and then the same thing goes for the, the west side of the property. On the west side, it's also opposite of the electrical room, so it'd be a much longer electrical run, so that didn't make sense for us, as well as not being compliant with DEP. So, the best spot was, was, was for the generator was in this location where we could actually get a DEP approval for our permits.
And so you would say, it's pretty fair to say, in your opinion, that, that the location of the generator there, one foot further into the buffer is, is due to the environmental constraints that are on the property?
That's correct.
Okay. And can you just confirm for the record that the generator will comply with any township and state noise regulations?
That's correct.
Okay. We have no further questions on direct. I'd like to open it up to the board and its professionals.
Okay. It occurred to me, we neglected to cover the waivers at this point. Would it be okay if we address that very quickly?
Absolutely.
Mr. Chairman, it also occurred to me at about the same time. It's getting late. We, we suggested a number of waivers, given the fact that there's no actual building proposed and no change of use to the building. We did ask for some more information, which has largely been addressed in terms of circulation, landscaping. We asked for the site photos, which have been provided, and then some of the other requested waivers pertain to the fact that this is a combined final with preliminary as well. So, that's about it.
Okay. I'll accept the motion to approve the waivers as presented?
No motion.
Okay.
Second for Jerry.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
And all opposed? None recorded? Thank you. All right. Waivers are accepted. Do any of the, Ms. Vatte, do you have any questions for the witness?
I, I do think one of the areas we asked about is just to confirm that there are no protective covenants or deep restrictions on the property.
Fair enough. Yes.
I think one of our questions or comments regarded vehicular circulation, and I think you've made that clear, that it's basically an existing condition.
Yes.
The drive-by width that's not changing. So, the height of the generator, when you put the enclosure around, I think you said it's about 13 and 1/2 feet?
Yeah, so the, the generator itself, it's about eight and 1/2 feet, and then it's inside of the enclosure, which goes to 13 and 1/2 feet from ground.
And have you looked at any reason or potential for vegetative screening? I guess I'm, I'm most concerned about the neighborhood.
Sure.
Just adjoining the property.
So, we had, under the application for the deck, we had put screen essentially back to its electrical easement, and there is also a tree or a couple trees to the east side of that. So, it's existing conditions. If, we could certainly look at a couple of evergreen trees in those areas if.
And you're not affecting any of the existing vegetation?
We're not removing any of the evergreen trees that are in that area that were planted. And I would, I would even go as far as saying there's a, the berm that's out there, I know it's only a few feet high. Anything to the north of that berm is not being touched either.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Mr. Caggianno, any questions for you?
No, he basically answered my questions about the, the wetland area adjacent there and the wetland buffer associated with it. So, you envision having to go in for a general permit or a transition averaging waiver?
General permit number 21 and 2, so that's above-ground and underground utilities.
And as far as the, the noise, this is, this, this generator is up against the rear property, close to the rear property line, right, right adjacent to that residential neighborhood, Hombdel Road, Lot 11. Is that 13-foot containment, is that offer any noise abatement?
Yes.
Because you would have to comply, I know you said you will, with the, with the township noise ordinance, and, and that, that is my concern, that it is so close to the, the rear of that property. However, I understand your testimony that due to the limitations and, and the, the offset from the wetland on the east, I see that you, you had to put it in that, that corner. Again, the noise is, is my only concern, so close to the residential property over there.
And that enclosure is, is meant to dampen the noise to be compliant with, with ordinance criteria. We also have an exhaust that's coming out the top of it for diesel fumes when, when the generator runs. That also has a dampening effect on it as well, so it's like a muffler on that as well. So, there's two ways to keep the sound down.
Those are my comments.
Okay. Any questions from the board at this time? Mr. Frigieri?
Yes. Just observing with, with your photo, which we appreciate you providing, going to what was just said regarding the, the noise, but also the sight line, it, the leaves are pretty much still on the trees. Have you guys taken, imagined, or what's it like when the leaves come down? We do, you know, there may be a need for that generator in a month of the year where there's no leaves on the trees, and, and the, the noise could be much, you know, more pronounced than, without that buffer of, of the, of the leaves on the trees for that neighborhood.
Sure, so there certainly are deciduous trees above what we planted in 2015, but what was installed in 2015 were evergreen trees in those areas, so those, I mean, it certainly takes a little bit of time to grow, but they've been there for five years, so they've had the opportunity to grow.
Yeah, I'm gonna continue on the noise. I'm concerned for the neighbors. I think our engineer requested that you do test the sound level after the installation.
Yeah, that would be fine.
And that it will fully comply, I mean.
Passed to, yeah. State, state code requires that any.
My little generator is noisy, so I can imagine what yours is like.
Yes. We would have to comply, it's a state, state requirement.
Okay, thank you. All right. My question is also about the noise level, but more, more in reference to the placement. I don't recall you speaking to perhaps a placement on that eastern side of the property close to Sylvan Way. Was there, were there any problems if, if the placement was further towards Sylvan Way, along the upper part of that boundary?
Yeah, there's a number of utility easements that run through this portion of the, the property, and there's also a wellhouse for Precipony in the dark gray area, so those, exclude those areas to wouldn't impact utilities.
Okay.
And for what it's worth, there's also a small stream quarter that comes through on the southwest side, does have some impacts from stream buffering in this area too, so this, this property was built back before the DEP kind of regulated a lot of these areas.
And, and so then this is the only location on this property where a generator would be appropriate?
Yes. We, we tried to put it next to the current generator that's out there, but DEP regulations don't allow it.
Do you, do you have any idea what the decibels would be of this generator while it's running once a week, every single week for 15 minutes?
Sure. The, the maximum it could be at the property line is 65 decibels, or the surrounding noise area, in the area, but because this is kind of isolated into, to an office park area, I would expect that it's going to be 65 decibels, which is the state code. And that's daytime noise, at nighttime it'll be 50. But just for, for, you know, for discussion purposes, when you run a generator in an emergency situation, you're not regulated by the state code, but during the exercising, which would be daytime, would be 65 decibels at the property line.
And do you, do you recall how close you are to the property of, or to the, to the structures of the residents in the area?
The, the structure would be 105 feet.
Okay. And based on your knowledge of how sound changes over distance, what would the impact of the sound be to the residents?
I can't speak for how it exactly works, but we worked with the manufacturer of the, the generator and their enclosure to confirm that this distance would be dissipated by that point.
Okay. As, as Steve mentioned, you know, his generator is quite noisy, and most of us experienced a number of generators running during the tropical storm that passed through.
Sure.
I think we all have a memory of that, which, you know, we, we all struggle through it because we're all dealing with the, the circumstances, but I don't believe those residents signed up for that.
Sure.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Mandel.
Could we define the period of exercising to ensure that it's, you know, midday, middle of the week? Is that legitimate, Mr. Attorney?
Of course. Yeah. A lot, a lot of towns have standard generator exercising conditions that require that it be done during the weekdays, during business hours.
Yeah, I, I would suggest that, because, I mean, 7:00 AM in the morning may not be the greatest time in the world to be awoken and.
I was awoken this morning to my town doing road work, so, at 6:45, so that was nice.
Yeah, well, that, that, that's why I'm suggesting, you know, be it, say it's noon, you know, whatever day, other than Saturday and Sunday.
Yeah, we'd be amenable to that, if we could give a little bit more of a range than just noon, maybe like.
I, I would say between the hours of 9:00 and 5:00, Monday through, through Friday.
Absolutely.
All right. I, I don't know if this is within our, our concern, but what is the nature of the business of Zoetis, and why do you need a generator on this site?
That's not really my area of expertise.
Yeah, so, so I can bring up a representative of the applicant if you'd like. Would you like to, to hear more about the operation?
I would like to understand that. Mr. Carlson, am I within my, uh?
You can call me any, any witness he likes.
Very good. Please, please do that.
We'll call a, a second witness, representative of the applicant, to come and testify to that question.
Thank you.
Good evening, sir. Would you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear the testimony you're about to provide is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Would you state and spell your name for the record, please?
I'm Tom Giedritis, last name is G-I-E-D-R-A-I-T-I-S.
Doctor witness, correct, Mr. Panier?
Yes.
Yours. All right. And Mr. Giedritis, could you please answer the chairman's question regarding the, the, your operations at the property and what you expect that a generator would be useful for?
All right, so Zoetis is, our, that office building is purely office function, it's our global headquarters. Zoetis is a animal health pharmaceutical, and that's where our entire executive team sits, as well as a lot of IT support, IT back-of-house systems, financial, everything.
So, this would be needed in order to support those operations globally?
In order to support those operations, in, in the event of, of a major outage, yes.
Okay, so the design of this generator is to support your, your IT systems, et cetera, not, not necessarily for staffing and other support, or?
It, it would, it's a, it's a full-building generator, so it would, it would allow us to fully operate without any impact.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? I appreciate you, your testimony.
No problem.
Yeah. Okay. Please continue.
Great. So, as you've heard today, the applicant is proposing a, a generator, a concrete pad, and related curbing to the property, and that is to service the existing building that's on the site. You've heard testimony from the project engineer that the location of the generator is, is required in its exact location due to environmental constraints that are currently on the property, and that that will result in an intensification of a pre-existing variance to now have a buffer of 97.4 feet, where 98.4 feet is existing and 150 feet is required, but it will also result in a, a less intensification of, of one of the variances existing, where 523 spaces will, will be remaining after, if the application is approved and the improvements are installed, and 525 spaces are currently existing. And as part of this application, the applicant also wanted to clarify an "as-built" to confirm a variance that had been granted on the prior application to allow for a, a drive aisle width of 22 feet, where 22.5 feet is existing and 24 feet is required. So, with the testimony that you've heard tonight, I would ask that the board vote to approve the preliminary and final site plan and related bulk variance relief.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the public? Any questions or comments from the board? All right. If that's, seeing nothing, I'll accept a, oh, gosh, I'm losing my mind today.
I want a motion.
Yes, thank you. I'll accept a motion at this time. Mr. Powerick?
I propose that we expect, approve the application before us.
Okay.
Subject to the conditions agreed to by the applicant. Yes.
All right, thank you very much.
I second it.
Seconded, Mandel. All right. Nora, would you call the vote?
Aparic.
Yes.
De Piero.
Yes.
Fergieri.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Mandel.
Yes.
Von Aken.
Yes. Thank you, board. I appreciate all your time tonight. Stay safe.
All right, thank you very much. Seconded, Mandel. All right. Nor, would you call the vote?
Aperilic.
Yes.
Carol.
Yes.
Frigiri.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Mandel.
Yes.
Von Aken.
Yes.
Thank you, Board, I appreciate all your time tonight. Stay safe.
All right, thank you very much. All right. It appears that concludes our agenda for the evening. Are there any other matters to be presented to the Board? Okay, I'll accept the motion to close the meeting.
I'll get back to you. Hernandez. Hernandez.
All right, motion Hernandez, second, Mandel. All right, all in favor?
No.
All opposed?
Sorry.
All right, meeting is closed. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. If you don't want to, I will take it. Thank you.
He's kind of running through similar applications tonight.
Two generators, huh? I, I guess the tropical storm ignited some interest.
Yeah. Our landlord and my wife do get a generated
Oh. Back to back.
Yeah, I, I forgot who I was talking to, but
I'm taking care of those sort of things, I'm gonna thank you so much.
I forgot who I was talking to, but
You know, he was going to go pick a walk on both applications.
Look, we can switch our